Good morning. I'd like to welcome everybody to the June sixteenth board meeting. I could ask, I'd like to call this meeting older and ask Mr. Slade to would say a word of prayer.
Father, thank you for the day you've given us today, the day you've made. Father, help us to be glad in it, to rejoice about it. Father, to give thanks for the opportunity that we have to come to serve this community that we call home. Thank you for these men, their willingness to serve, Father, the way they sacrifice and give of themselves so that they might serve the best interests of all citizens of our community. Father, I think about the men and women who protect us every day. Father, they go out not knowing what dangers they may face. Father, they do that willingly in service to their fellow man. I pray for their protection, for their safety. Father, I pray that you would bring them home safely to their families in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Public comments.
Mr. President, we have with us today a representative from Congressman Michael Guest's office, Mr. Chad Dixon. Chad, I think you've got something you want to address to the board.
Yes, sir. I was just gonna say Congressman had to be somewhere this morning. He would not, he would love to be here with his fellow supervisors. That he just wants to tell y'all, he thinks y'all are doing a great job. And if there's anything that we can do to assist y'all in any way, shape, form, or fashion, or any of the constituents that, you know, we'd be more than happy to help. And I just wanted you to know that we were here and available if anybody needed us. He just so happened he had to be somewhere else this morning. He's had a long week and getting ready for a longer one next week, so.
Well, we thank y'all for what y'all do.
Would you mind getting here and taking a picture with us?
Sure, sure. I'd love to.
By the way, you have proof that you can show Mike.
Mike can check.
Where you at?
Right here.
All right. Here you go, guys. One, two, three. We'll take two and three, just in case we got to close today. Thank y'all.
Snuck up on my blind side.
Will you send that too? You got my number?
Yes, sir. Thanks, okay.
That's my bad signing.
Aye, sir. Thank you.
Sorry about y'all.
No, thank you for coming by.
Yes, sir.
Just remember, Slade's got money. All right. Where is the part on consent that we want to move off?
Next, we have Mr. Joey Deaton.
Joe, you actually should, you can say what you want to right now, but.
I wouldn't wait till it's time to, me and Joey are together, we can wait till it's time.
He's, he's under, later on, under one of the sections.
Public hearing.
I mean, yeah, public hearing.
Okay, I had him under public comments.
Well, he probably signed in.
I'll probably get up there and comment anyway.
All right, now, old business.
Motion approved.
Second.
Jay made a motion to approve. Steve seconded that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Motion carries. Consent agenda. Has everybody had time to look over the consent agenda?
Yeah, I'd like to. I don't have any issue with one fine item. It's gonna be item J. I think we need to discuss that in the second session.
So you would like to remove item J and discuss it in executive session?
Correct.
And we, Craig, we can come back to J under additional business. Okay.
All right, Brad made a motion.
No, I didn't make a motion yet. Well, I'm making a motion to approve, except item J. Second.
Brad made a motion to item J to some public executive and come back to it under additional business. Jay seconded the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Motion carries. Now, have I got a motion to approve the rest of the consent?
We did.
We got it covered.
Yeah.
All right, Miss Stacy McNich.
Good morning.
Good morning. Item A, we have petitions to adjust the twenty-four Homestead exemption supplemental rule.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Steve made a motion. Jay seconded the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Aye. Motion carries.
B, petitions for change of assessment on twenty-four real and personal property assessments.
Motion to approve.
My second. Jay made a motion. I seconded the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Motion carries.
Item C, we're requesting authority for the twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four tax bills and tax sales for twenty-two and twenty-three be voided for Pen seven, eight, nine, six, two, and request the tax collectors reissue tax statements for the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four tax years in the name of Macias Land Company, LLC, and refund any tax sale purchasers. This was a situation where, once the property transferred, they did not transfer the owner's thing. So it was going in the previous owner.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Brad made a motion. Steve seconded the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pittman, purchasing clerk.
Gentlemen, I'm here to, for, on June the tenth, twenty-twenty-five, at eight-thirty, we opened bids for, term bids for asphalt for a period of July one to December thirty-first. And, uh, oh, there's, I provide you a recap of other bids. Do we need to go ahead and, do I need to go ahead and read those bids out, just to have them in public record?
No. I think you can just hand a copy of that.
You'd be here all day.
Mm-hmm. Copy of that.
I do have a question. Why did we not open these when we had a board meeting?
Um, that's a good question. I, I just.
We all have times in the past we have, so I didn't.
Did we, our plan for this meeting developed July third, so by the time they advertised, we went out. We needed to get them open so we could have them approved by the board before July. So we worked three days out. We've made a mental note to watch that.
Ten full. Thank you. I make motion to approve, uh, the items as presented.
Second.
All right. Jay made a motion. Brad seconded the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Motion carries.
Our next bid was for gravel, the clay gravel that we, and, uh, the winner of the bid was, uh, J and L Enterprises as a recommended vendor.
So the second one we got is B, and it lists a whole bunch of things, like metal coverage, fresh aggregate, gravel, soil stabilization.
Jay, that's, that's a carryover you're being asked to simply renew what was already awarded for being.
Yeah, that's the B. This is, we're still on A for the, for the clay gravel.
I thought we just awarded that.
That's, I was just gonna say, maybe they'd pay a award in both the asphalt and the clay gravel.
All right. So. B, item B is for a recap of responses for the, and you should have a copy of that, too, um, of the term bids that have an option to renew. So this is, we're exercising the option to renew for those, for that.
All of them are still good?
All of them are still good, yes.
I remember we had some issues with gravel last time, didn't we? All that squared away. I make motion to approve items as presented.
Second.
Jay made a motion. Brad seconded the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Mike Harrison, our road manager.
Morning.
Morning. Uh, road work accomplished and scheduled for May and June.
Motion approved.
Second.
Brad made a motion. Steve seconded the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Motion carries.
I have a few AT&T permit for Highway eighteen and Shell Oil.
I make a motion to approve B and C.
B and C.
All right.
Of District Three.
I'll second.
Brad made a motion to approve B and C. Steve seconded the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Aye. Motion carries. Is that all you got?
Yep.
Uh, we did not, uh, get the bid on the debris truck the other day that we bid on. It went out of our, our range.
Well, where are we at on a debris truck?
Don't worry, you'll buy one soon enough.
We got, we got one, don't we?
We have one. Yes, sir. We have one. Uh, we can actually either advertise, we got time to advertise and get one in, or we can wait till next budget cycle. That'd be up to the boards to see.
I just know that we have a lot of debris and dead trees, you know, still need to be picked up.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, you know, scattered throughout. And, uh, I personally think we need to, to go ahead and, and get one just to keep the ball rolling. Cause I'm getting calls every day, you know, of the dead trees and debris on side the road, and.
So they not on state contract?
No, sir. We've got one, one demo that we found, Jay, last week. Uh, like one vendor does have a demo, but it's gonna be about impossible to bid it out because it's got miles and.
Yeah.
The year model, I mean, you would have to, just eliminate that one for the bid, is all I know it would do.
I just.
I don't know how to.
I know, but there.
Craig may have some suggestions, but I don't know how to.
We could actually spec a used, uh, which obviously is gonna require.
I don't think we wanna do that. You open up a whole can of worms in.
I agree with that, and it's, it's not impossible to find comparability when you go that direction, because you just don't know.
What kind of money you talking about, the difference from the demo versus?
Well, demo be somewheres around the one-eighty, one-eighty-three mark, you know, I don't know what it's like, but it's, there's gonna be somewheres around that mark.
Versus two-hundred?
Versus five, two-forty-seven.
So I talked with the guy down at, uh, Simpson. They just bought two for two-hundred. I don't know the same model of a guy, but it wouldn't hurt to.
Yeah. That's what I'm saying. I mean, I, I just gotta get in. I got several of them I talked to last week, you know.
Yeah.
Just gotta get some specs and put it together.
I, I just know this, the dead trees is gonna be around, you know, a little bit longer than we anticipated as far as trying to get stuff cleaned up, picked up, and, uh, just when you think it's getting better, where you ride down the road and it's, you know, back like it was, I think.
We can do a spec package, uh, probably, you know, with some help on this, although I don't know if you get heavenly high equipment side, makes better memory. My thought is that in your specifications, you can, you can say that you would prefer a lightly-used model that meets the specifications and telegraph to vendors, if you've got one that has some miles on it, we'd be interested in knowing what the price for that is.
Could we do just like a alternate?
Did Simpson buy a new one?
Yeah.
Or?
What it was, they had ordered a bunch for a different county, and they only took half of them.
Uh.
So there's still two available.
There are.
There's two available?
Yeah.
Are they brand new?
Yeah.
Two hundred thousand.
Two hundred each, yeah.
Oh, two hundred each.
Yeah.
I thought you got two of them for two hundred.
No, I was gonna pick with you, yeah. We wait till next year, we may have to buy two to catch up.
Yeah, you don't need to. So can we go ahead and approve, uh, the bid now, or coming up with our P?
Putting together a spec specifications package and authorizing the publisher to any required notice.
There you go, again.
Y'all make a, if you wanna do that, we'll make a motion and add it to the agenda.
Well, Mike, what, how much money are you thinking you're gonna have to spend for a good use, softly-used?
A hundred and fifty.
Well, we, we, we thought we'd get them others bought for one-fifty, and they went for the one-fifty-five, one-sixty range. You know, it just depends on.
Okay.
Who's got a contract where, Steve, and if somebody was needing these trucks to go somewheres that we bid on, you know.
I didn't realize it was that close.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, but we couldn't go over our approved mark.
All right.
So. Is that what you want to do?
I make motion to add this item to the agenda.
Second.
Jay made a motion to add this item to the agenda. Steve seconded it. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh, I make motion approval of purchasing one or more debris trucks.
I second that motion. Jay made a motion to approve. I second the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Motion carries.
Look at here, man, you gotta spend two hundred thousand just coming up here.
Thank you.
Well, I, I, I want it put to, I want it put to use on, on, on the roads.
I do. Thank y'all.
Yeah. Ms. Parker, if you could, we're gonna skip around just a second and come back to you.
All right, that'd be fine.
Oh, well, you're already up here. Go ahead then.
I'm ready.
Yeah. Tim Parker, county engineer.
Item A, Mr. President, is on our Oakdale Road Bridge Replacement. Uh, we recommend a final payment in the amount of eight-hundred-and-forty-six thousand, eighty-eight dollars and ninety-one cents under purchase order two-five-one-two-three-seven to Hemp Hill Construction Company, Inc., and authority to issue that in check. That's a District Four Bridge Replacement.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Steve made a motion. Brad seconded the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Motion carries.
Item B, Mr. President, is Fallen Oak Subdivision Phase Five. We recommend an approval of the construction drawings. That's District Four. That's additional eleven lots, I believe, in front of Fallen Oak.
Yeah. I make motion to approve it.
Second.
Steve made a motion. Jay seconded the motion. Any further discussion?
Um, this, just for, uh, to explain, Fallen Oak is a really nice subdivision. Has great influence, and they held off the front part of these, of the subdivision, uh, to see after it was finished, what would be the best use. You know, maybe it would be better to go with some type strip mall or commercial. And I think the people that live there and the, and the people that are developing it realize that the best use was residential, and they're doing really nice homes. Uh, and that's why this wasn't included in the other, so. All right. All right, we've got a motion and approval, I mean, so we need to vote, I think, for that thing, isn't it?
Yeah, I believe we already voted on it.
Yeah, I was just gonna say.
Yeah.
All in favor.
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Uh. Motion carries.
Item three, Mr. President, is one of our ARPA projects. This is hydrologic restoration at Melamie, Program Element four-point-zero-nine. We recommend an approval of payout number seven, uh, which is the final payout from To Be Dirt and Contracting, LLC, in the amount of twenty-four thousand, four-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars and eighty-eight cents, and authority to issue the check. That's a District Four project.
This will wrap it up. This project will be.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Steve made a motion. Brad seconded the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Greg Slade?
Good morning, gentlemen. Thank you. Uh, it looks to me, Mr. President, that items A through F under my section are all to set public hearings for July the third at nine a.m. You see those listed there. I, I see nuisance and condemnation reviews, um, for, for those, all of those settings.
I'll make a motion to set A through F for July the third.
I second that motion. Brad made a motion. I seconded the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Motion carries.
Next on under my section is a public hearing on Bobby Elmore Trax LLC Conditional Use Permit. It's a Highway twenty-five location, District Four. I will open that public hearing. Mr. Elmore Trax LLC is seeking a conditional use permit to mine seventy-four-point-thirty-nine acres on Highway twenty-five. A large portion of the property is zoned A-two, with a smaller portion of the property zoned RE-one. Elmore and Trax LLC were approved for a conditional use permit on February the third of twenty-twenty-five to mine a four-acre location, which would be exempt under MDEQ regs. Um, they, uh, they have received approval of an exempt operation permit through MDEQ. Uh, now they are back to secure board approval for an expansion of that initially exempt, um, permitted, uh, aspect of it, and, um, uh, we, we need to approve an expansion of that use by way of an official conditional use permit that covers the entirety of the request. Uh, there have been, I'm sorry, ingress and egress will be the same as what the board has already approved on February third of twenty-twenty-five, should the board move forward to expand the conditional use permit for this purpose. We do have some conditions, gentlemen, that, uh, we typically use in these kinds of circumstances. I'm happy to go over those, Mr. President, if you think that would be helpful. Uh, it would be essentially the same, uh, conditions that were in place for the smaller requests. Um, hours of operation and water trucks and all that kind of good stuff, keeping the road free of debris. Those kinds of things are just our standard stuff. That public hearing is open. At this time, I will ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Bobby Elmore Trax LLC Conditional Use Permit. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter?
Yeah, make a.
Please give us your name and address. My, what you laughing at, Greg? I'm Joe Deaton, and I live at eighty-eight seventy-one Highway twenty-five North. I own Lazy Day Farms. It's about three hundred acres between there and the other side of the road. I've got about sixteen acres in District Two and two-hundred and some odd in District Four. Uh, the driveway for this facility is about a quarter of a mile from my closest driveway to my place on Twenty-five Highway. The first I knew about, uh, the request to expand was when I saw the sign go up. So quite frankly, I haven't seen what the plan is, other than there's a plan to expand an existing four-acre exempt facility. I mean, you're entitled to dig four acres out of the ground if you want to. But to put a seventy-four acre site there is a whole nother ballgame, and it requires, uh, a plan afterwards to reclaim whatever you remove under the nineteen-ninety-two Reclamation Act. I'm not so much concerned about somebody removing material. I'm more concerned about what they're gonna do with it when they get through removing that material, because the DEQ's gonna require that that site be reclaimed, having not seen the entire plan, including elevations, because, guys, y'all all know what Highway twenty-five looks like. It's a four-lane paved road with a divided median, but that actually is the gateway from the north to our community out there at Sand Hill. I mean, this is right dead on the side of the way you come and go to Sand Hill. And we, we're not a very big place, but we got a whole lots of folks moving out there every day. And every time I look, if you'd have told me when I bought that place almost twenty years ago, that town was gonna catch up with me, I'd have laughed at you. But it just about caught up to us. So it's not so much about the removal of the material, it's more about what we gonna do once that material's removed. I don't know how many of y'all have gone, I know you know, because you live out there, but I don't know how many of y'all have gone out there and looked, but here's the deal. You got a ridge, you got the roadside ditch, no problem. Then you got the, the burn there that the highway department has, and then you got a big ridge and it falls off in the back. This place, there's only one narrow landowner between this place and my farm. And four or five of the adjoining neighbors who couldn't be here today asked me to come up here and say, we worried about this. We real worried about this. Now, I, I've talked to an awful lot of other folks in the community, and I guess most folks had a lot to do today, and they didn't realize the meeting for this public hearing was today. And I don't presume to speak for them, other than the ones that told me, hey, we, 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 we don't want this right here in our neighborhood. And you got, you know, the next street up's North Sand Hill Road. You got a couple of churches down that road, and you got a bunch of folks that's lived there since the end of the war, Northern Aggression. I mean, you know, the folks been there a long time. But I'm, a- as I said, I'm more concerned, not so much with what they're doing about the removal of the material, but what they're gonna do to reclaim it. You can't put a lake that close to the highway, I don't think. So you can't dig a hole and reclaim it as a lake, so, and you're not gonna buy dirt to fill the hole back in. So what are you gonna do with it? And you're gonna have it, and, and so, for that reason, and the fact that I don't know anymore about it than I do, I oppose it, as do my closest neighbors and, I don't know, eight or ten other folks in the community. I'm sure you've had a bunch of phone calls, Steve.
I have.
About it. And, uh, you know, if y'all have any questions for me, I'm glad to answer them. But I have, uh, I have looked at this thing pretty thoroughly, and, you know, we, we got concerns, big concerns, and we need those addressed before this board takes action to approve that.
All right. Have we had any signatures, you know, in the office? Anybody signed any signatures against it?
No, sir. We have not.
Probably not. I mean, they, 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 most folks just called me. I'm the only guy around.
Right. Well, I didn't, I didn't know, you know, yeah.
They just called me. I mean, I can tell them to come up here and say it, but they, most of them just called me. Most of these people are elderly and, uh, you know, come to town, it's kind of a once-a-month thing. So anyhow.
Gentlemen, I think it'd be appropriate to allow, uh, Mr. Elmore, uh, or representative of his company to approach and address the board concerning these concerns that have been raised, and any other information they wish to provide to the board in support of their application.
Hi, Bobby Elmore.
Morning.
FC and E Engineering.
And I'm Harry Wilson with FC and E Engineering here in Brandon.
Give us your address, or the address of the company or whatever, for the record.
FC and E Engineering's on nine-seventeen Marquette Road here, close to the amphitheater.
Okay.
Um, so speaking to this, uh, the bigger thing was the reclamation of the property. That's a big part of these permits, and, and Mr. Elmore has to get a, a bond for the entire property, and it'll take a thousand dollars an acre just to have that money to reclaim the land. Generally speaking, and Bobby, you can speak to this too, but sure, the mining follows the contours of the existing land, okay? And so when you're done with it, you've got a smooth, all but lower elevation for the entire property, and there may be a pond on the low side of the property that's used for sedimentation control during, during the mining operation, but could be left as a pond, uh, but it's not gonna be just a gigantic lake or anything like that. The other part of the reclamation is, is we've got to grass it or put trees on it, and you don't get your bond released until you've established permanent vegetation and stabilization of that property after the mining has been completed. And so, and Bobby's, Mr. Elmore has run a big mine in Madison County with a hundred percent compliance record. And when DEQ has come out there and looked at parts of that mine that we've completed now, they've said that it looks great. Um, and, and they've had no problems with it whatsoever. But that's, that's addressing the reclamation part of what's it gonna look like afterwards. Brian, I think you and I talked about this a little too.
That's a DEQ process.
Yes, right.
That's something that we regulate.
They don't just give these, they don't just give these permits out. We've got a, a long way to go with, you gotta get a stormwater permit that protects erosion and sediment control at the site. We've gotta get. We've gotta get the full, uh, geology permit, you know, we've gotta get a bond in place, all that stuff is still, um, you know, uh, this is the first step and we're gonna go through a rigorous process with M D E Q. It takes a, a good bit of time and a good bit of review, they just don't give these permits out, uh, without you meeting every, uh, intent of the regs and the law.
Why can't it be done like the rest of the four acre sections and reclaim the four acres and come back each time?
It just doesn't make sense bunny wise to do it that way. And you've gotta reclaim the first four acre before you can move to the second four acre. And, um, this is the, the way the normal process works.
If it was the intention all along, why didn't you go ahead and start with large forms to begin with?
Well, the four acres takes about six weeks to get, to even start construction. And then the larger permit takes about eight months.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this matter that's before the board? Is there anyone else to speak on it?
I'd just like to, real three point, three point, I think y'all hear not clear. Y'all all know I ain't real smart and I don't read and write real good, but I, I can listen pretty carefully. And what I heard him say is they generally follow the elevations. And they may do this and they may do that. That ain't saying what they gonna do, fellas. We need to see those elevations and has anybody gone to Madison County to look at the operation that they have? I don't see a said pond out there and I think their four acres requires a said pond. So their, uh, next question is, do y'all have a said pond plan filed for the four acres you got? Too many unresolved questions to make. So at this point in time, I'm gonna suggest that this board, at a bare minimum, take this under advisement because I don't think there's enough questions answered that this board can approve a seventy-four acre site. That's mighty big place.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else to speak? Mr. President, I, I don't see anyone else approaching it.
Hold on, we got.
Okay.
With, with regard to the, um, the reclamation plan again, that is part of the Office of Geology, uh, application package. And the Office of Geology goes through a public notice and a public hearing process as well. Those, those application documents will be available for public review during the process. So there's gonna be additional public notice, uh, ability for the stormwater permit. There's gonna be additional public notice and public hearing, uh, process for the, um, geology mining application as well. So there are other opportunities to address this as well. Where you're seeing the specific paperwork, um, related to the, uh, approximately seventy acre mine expansion.
Can we just table this until we get that paperwork?
Well, Mr. President, you know, the reason I went along with this originally was it was only four acres and it is right on Twenty-five. So, you know, if I'd known we were gonna have this presented now, I wouldn't have voted for it originally. So for those reasons, I make a motion to deny it.
I, I have the same feeling as Jay, this is very prime real estate. And the people around it don't wanna hear the banging and clattering of these trucks. Uh, I think they could put up with it four acres at a time, but they would have to go back, this would, I mean, they, they just had to apply for that. And I know they have to reclaim that four acres before they get the next one, but I wanna see that, that's what I wanna see, is it be reclaimed. We have had in the past where we approved and everything didn't come out like it was supposed to. Even though D E Q and its bonding and all that, still ended up with a hole in the ground and this LLC is gone. Uh, so I second the motion Jay made.
Is there a big project that this dirt's going to or far or?
Yeah, it's one of the Spencer sites, in my, uh, in my reservoir, subdivision, forty-three.
Right.
Right down. Down by Tommy's, I think it is.
We have a motion to second.
Jay made a motion to deny, Steve sacked the motion, any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Mr. President, the next item, uh, is, uh, item H, it's a public hearing on the Traymond and Lisa Davis conditional use permit on Bill Banks Street, it's a District Three property. Uh, we will open that public hearing. Traymond and Lisa Davis are seeking a conditional use permit to place a twenty-twenty-five, twenty-eight by seventy-six manufactured home on Bill Banks Street in Robin Hood subdivision. Uh, the Davises own fifteen lots that are a combined three point five eight acres. Property is zoned R M X, it's located in what's known as the A flood zone. The A zone is considered a special flood hazard area without any sort of base flood elevation having been determined. A flood study and a flood elevation certificate will be required to determine the base flood elevation after or assuming the board grants this conditional use request. Uh, there have been no calls received in opposition to this request. At this time, that public hearing is open, I will ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the conditional use request of Traymond and Lisa Davis. Is anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on this matter unless the board has questions. Uh, the, the matter is ripe for, uh, consideration.
Brian, I mean, they are working on the flood elevation.
Yes, sir.
Paperwork.
Yes, sir, um, they're working on it now and, um, I've actually got, I haven't reviewed it just yet, but we have paperwork. I'll go over that, take a look at that and then see if there's anything else they need.
I think Ms. Davis would like to speak. Okay. You can, and let him just review it, and if.
Yeah, this is, I do have this. Um, yeah, I just haven't had a chance to review it, we'll look at this and also, like I said, we'll need a, um, yeah, we'll need the final.
I'll make a motion to approve with, as long as the.
Yeah, we're good.
Everything's good.
I second it. Brad made a motion, I second the motion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
All right, motion carries.
And the building department, Brian will get in touch with you after he reviews it, you should be good, guy. Thank you.
The next public hearing, gentlemen, is the David and Courtney Reeves conditional use permit request. Uh, that public hearing is now open, Mr. and Ms. Reeves are seeking a conditional use permit to add what's called an accessory dwelling unit at three sixty-six Bover Road in Florence. This will be a District One property, it's a one point three eight acre parcel, it's zoned A one. Mr. and Ms. Reeves are requesting to add a six hundred foot, uh, square foot, uh, uh, element to an existing shop that's already on the property and it would be used, uh, as a mother-in-law suite. Uh, the signs that have been posted, all of the notifications have been made. Uh, the Office of Community Development has received no calls in opposition on this request. Um, I will ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the David and Courtney Reeves conditional use permit request. Anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to, to rising to speak in opposition on that matter, we will close that public hearing. Uh, we do have a condition to offer and that is that this, uh, this element, this accessory dwelling unit cannot be used for rental purposes, that would be a condition. And so the staff is making that recommended condition be issued in conformity with the permit if the board chooses to issue the permit. It would be appropriate to take action.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I made a motion to approve, Steve sacked the motion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Motion carries.
Next item under my section, gentlemen, is, uh, our need under state law to acknowledge receipt of a resignation letter behalf of our District Two supervisor. Uh, that letter was received on June the fourth. Uh, that letter, uh, indicated that the last day, uh, was June the thirteenth. So as of June the thirteenth, there is a vacancy created in the position of District Two supervisor for Rankin County. This time it is appropriate under state law for this board to acknowledge receipt of the resignation letter, to acknowledge that a vacancy has been created. And the board should consider the adoption of a board order, not only establishing the vacancy in this county district office, but commanding that the Rankin County Election Commission schedule a special election in accordance with Mississippi Code Annotated, Section twenty-three dash fifteen dash eight thirty-three, to fill the unexpired term of office for the Rankin County District Two supervisor. So that is, uh, that is what is before the board, is acknowledge the vacancy and to enter a board order commanding the election commission to schedule the appropriate special election. So I'd need a motion to authorize what I just said, uh, and then we'll go from there.
I make that motion.
I second it. Steve made a motion, I second the motion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
For the record, gentlemen, the regular special election day every year is the first Tuesday after the first Monday of November. And so that is when a special election would be set for this coming November for that vacancy to be filled. The, uh, the, wh- whomever is elected by the citizens of District Two supervisor will, uh, seat an individual that will serve out the remainder of Scott's unexpired term.
And that would begin right after the election is certified?
Steve, um, I, I'm gonna defer and say that I need to get clarity on precisely when, most of the time, when an individual is seated for election purposes, they don't actually take office until the first Monday of January. So I wanna get clarity that where we have a vacancy like this and we're filling an unexpired term.
Yeah.
Does that a- authority to be seated begin immediately at the next occasion after the election is certified and an oath is taken, or will we be waiting until January?
Okay.
I don't know the answer to that.
All right.
That, yeah, that's shocking.
I don't know is an acceptable answer, I've learned, uh, so, uh, so I, I wanna use that answer on this occasion. I'm not a hundred percent sure what the law requires on that. My gut tells me that they would take office, uh, on January, the first Monday of January, but I've been wrong before.
Well, I hate Scott is resigning, but hey, I, I wish him and his family the best of, the best of luck for, to them. I know that, hey, he put his heart and time into this position and I, I can't fault him for bettering and, uh, doing what he loves, uh, with the offer that he's got. But I just wanna let everybody know that he, he did put a lot of heart and time into why he was here, and I hate to see him go.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, we, did we, we, did we vote on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Next item is item K, gentlemen, this is the authority, the authority of the board president and county administrator to act, execute all documents or contracts or agreements, whatever may be required that are associated with our general obligation bond issued, the board has already noticed. Uh, this is to stage and get us prepared for the eventuality that the board will in fact issue a general obligation bond in coming days. Uh, you are not being asked to authorize anything in particular, we are simply staging that authority in the event we need to have it. I just need a motion to that effect.
Most approve.
Second.
Jay made a motion, Steve sacked the motion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Motion carries.
Your next opportunity to address the authority to do the general bond, general obligation bond will be, uh, at your July seven meeting. Uh, that's been published in the newspaper, providing the appropriate notice to all citizens of Rankin County concerning that matter. And that will be your next opportunity to actually address the issuance of the bond at that time. I just wanted to put that out there so that nobody is assuming that we already decided we're gonna do that. That has not been decided yet, it will be decided more effectively on July the seventh. Okay. Gentlemen, I do have several matters that I'll have to address with you in executive session. Uh, and we do have one item of additional business that's already been alluded to with respect to that consent item. And so I would anticipate some additional discussion between us.
Mr. Hicks?
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
The first item on the agenda.
Collar.
Is, uh, related to our, one of our ARPA projects, uh, this is our stormwater infrastructure near Reservoir East. Um, the first part of this is approval of a second change order, uh, with an extension of fifty-four days, forty actual days of rain delay with a, an additional fourteen days of expected rain delays. And it also includes a payout for work done to date in the amount of five hundred thirteen thousand, one hundred eighteen dollars fifty-two cents.
Most approve.
Second.
Jay made a motion, Steve sacked the motion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Motion carries.
Uh, the next item is the Oak Grove Ditch Project, uh, another ARPA project. And this is payout number eleven, the amount of one hundred seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred thirty-five dollars and eighty-one cents.
Most approve.
Second.
Jay made a motion, Steve sacked the motion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Motion carries.
We do have items to be discussed, uh, with executive related to personnel.
I make a motion, Steve, for executive session.
Second.
Jay made a motion, Brad sacked the motion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Motion carries.
Ending litigation.
I make a motion.
You, you heard personnel, so.
Personnel, litigation.
Litigation and personnel both have justifications for the need for executive.
All right, that's my motion.
That's. Steve made a motion, Jay sacked a motion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Motion carries.
We're in executive.